Please rise for a salute at the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So motion.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Here. Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any corrections or additions? Saying none, I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Ms. Perez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the board.
Thank you. Mr. President, the following bids and proposals were received for the 2024-2025 school year on May 9th, 2024, PSA 9702 for the Avonel Street School addition and renovation, May 10th, 2024 IFB 25-02 for athletic supplies, and also on May 10th, 2024 IFB 25-03 for physical education supplies.
Thank you, Mr. Wolferman. Dr. Massimino, please reintroduce, excuse me, not reintroduce, introduce our student representative this evening from Colonia High School, Ms. Anne Theresa Arganza. Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here.
Mr. President, thank you. Anne Theresa Arganza is currently a junior who is ranked number one in her class at Colonia High School. Anne loves to perform and is heavily involved in the performing arts at Colonia High School. Some of her many talents include playing the alto saxophone for the marching band and singing in every choir offered at CHS, including women's concert, mixed show, and a cappella. Anne has been part of the casting in the CHS Spring Musical since her freshman year. This year, she played the pivotal role of Jack's mother in the musical Into the Woods. Academically, Anne is a member of the National Science Mu Alpha Theta and Thesbian Honor Society. She placed first in the Woodbridge Set Science Symposium both her freshman and sophomore year in category and grade level for her research projects on anti-bubble stability and regularly completes community service through her church. She has performed in the church choir every week since she was four. During the holidays, she can be found singing in various nursing homes and caroling fundraisers. While in the summer, she is busy teaching children's songs at the St. Anne's Children's Summer Camp. Anne, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino, members of COLT, President Harris, and members of the Board of Education for inviting me here this evening. I'll be reading an activity list by different schools. At school number four and five, there was a PTO Paint With Me event, a Grade Four trip to the Monmouth Battlefield, Grade One trip to the Von Thun Farm, Green Team Spring Cleanup, DEI Showcase, Spring Instrumental Music Concert on May 16, Grade Three trip to the Turtleback Zoo, Grade Five Dare Graduation, Grade One Reading Celebration, Grade Two trip to the Turtleback Zoo, and an NEHS Induction Ceremony. At school number 20, there were sweeps with someone special, a Scholastic Book Fair, an assembly with Alec Lesniak, student author of Muffin Man 2, Ronald McDonald House DEI Project Art Show, Chorus and Band Spring Concert, 5th Grade Class Trip to iPlay, 1st Grade Reading Celebration, Kids Heart Challenge Assembly, and Dare Graduation. At school number 21, Ben Leary Day was held to support a student battling leukemia. There was a Walkathon and Bubbles for Autism Event, a collaboration with CHS baseball team. Ben Leary was named Home Run Hero at North Brunswick Community Park. There was a Therapy Dog Visit, a Night of the Arts, NEHS Ceremony, Social Media Safety Assembly with Officer Harris, DEI Showcase, and Grade Five Science Fair. At school number 22, 25 students were inducted into the National Elementary Honor Society. Autism Acceptance Month was celebrated with daily announcements. Students and staff wore blue during our Bubbles for Autism Celebration. Sean Dollywall and Kaylee Nowicki were recognized for their outstanding writing at the District's Evening with Young Writers. CMS Student Author Alec Lesniak read his book Muffin Man 2: Attack of the Baker's Dozen. Spring Pep Rally was held to recognize students for their academic and behavioral accomplishments. The World Showcase was held, where students enjoyed learning about the country they researched and the many other countries they visited throughout the day. The Student Council and NEHS joined teams with the Colonia High School Environmental Cleanup Club to do a campus-wide cleanup and planted annuals. At school number 23, an art show was held for parents, the Dare Graduation was held, Woodbine Avenue Spring Concert was held, their annual science fair was held, and their 5th graders went on a class trip to iPlay America. At school number 24, their National Elementary Honor Society induction will be held on May 22. At school number 27, Lions Color Run was held, the Student Council and National Elementary Honor Society conducted a campus cleanup. The school won a contest to have a complete makeover of the teachers' lounge from Walmart and Crayola. There's a family math and family STEM program that is ongoing, field trips to the Liberty Science Center, the NEHS Induction Ceremony was held, and the spring concert will be on May 22. At Avonel Middle School, Marissa Serpa was selected as NJHS Outstanding Achievement Award recipient and received a $500 scholarship. The dance company had a successful spring performance. Eight students participated in the Fire Bowl held at the Middlesex County Fire Academy. Their annual Day of Giving was celebrated with donations made to the Woodbridge Township Domestic Violence Response Team, Woodbridge Buddy Ball Organization, Meals on Wheels of Edison, Matatchan, and Woodbridge, Be the Change New Jersey Organization, and the Woodbridge Township Animal Shelter. At Colonia Middle School, over $5,000 was raised for the American Heart Association during the school-wide American Heart Challenge. Angelica Arganza and Olivia Gaffney were selected as the NJHS Outstanding Award recipients and received $500 scholarships. At Colonia High School, students collaborated on an art project for Autism Inclusion Month. Students collaborated on a dance project for Autism Inclusion Month as well. Sutrit Rao, Sky Olivera, and Noah Alvarez submitted a plan to create the Environmental Cleanup Crew of Woodbridge. CHS paired up 20 seniors with about 50 elementary students. Students participated in a scavenger hunt while cleaning up garbage around the school and weeded and planted flowers. The Rokeupa History Honor Society took an overnight trip to Washington, DC to explore the various museums and monuments of our nation's capital. Members of the CHS Chess Team competed in a cross-town tournament with JFK. National Honor Society participated in Terra Cycling with Ecology Club, raising the flag at Women's History Month, the Red Cross Blood Drive, Spring Voting Registration Drive. They donated to the Woodbridge Animal Shelter and the Ramadan Food Drive. Students in Sociology classes participated in a research design project related to the topic of adolescence and stress. Members of the Spanish Honor Society visited with the 8th graders at Colonia Middle School to discuss their personal experiences with Spanish courses, Middlesex Dual Enrollment Information, and the Seal of Bi-Literacy. Youth empowerment leaders went to Oak Tree Road Elementary School and Colonia Middle School during Women's History Month. The Interact Club hosted a Red Cross Blood Drive where 49 units of blood were collected. The Ceramics 1 Class researched the engineering behind passive cellphone amplifiers, then designed and built their own. The Principles of Business Class was invited to be the Sharks and evaluated each on design, ease of use, accessibility, sound quality, volume, and more. The Dance Team has been selected as the NJ.com Game Changer Award finalist for Dance Team of the Year. The freshman, sophomore, and junior class advisors and officers have focused on fundraising, selling autism acceptance T-shirts, infinity symbol hearts, and hosting a bake sale in which all proceeds will be donated to the POAC. Student volunteers will also be attending the POAC Walk at Woodbridge High School. The Colonia High School English Honor Society read to students at schools number four and five, number 20, number 22, and number 27. The Mathematics Honor Society hosted its annual STEM display in the auditorium. Over 500 students engaged with our interactive displays. Through our bake sales during Pi Week, we raised over $1,000 to fund our STEM scholarships. The Tomorrow's Teachers Program of Colonia High School collected hundreds of books to donate to the Bridge of Books Foundation. The CHS Guitar Club held the Spring Coffee House. A Zoom meeting was held with author and director of Perks of Being a Wallflower, Stephen Chabaski. The CHS Choirs held the Spring Choral Concert on May 8. The TRIM Music Honor Society inducted 12 new members. 14 students were also awarded the TRIM Honor Chords for Graduation. Asian Culture Club is celebrating Asian Pacific American Month with an AAPI Fair to be held in the CHS Courtyard. The DEI Team organized the Day of Dialogue Assembly. Food grown by members of the Ecology Club was donated to a local food pantry. The members of the Ecology Club collaborated with members of the Science National Honor Society to organize a celebration of Earth Day. A student from Colonia High School participated in the Student Research Symposium as a part of our participation in the Growing Beyond Earth Program. Members of the Ecology Club conducted a two-hour cleanup of the grounds at Colonia High School. Members of the Ecology Club continued to maintain our pollinator garden and rain gardens. The Ecology Club continues to promote programs that reduce the amount of plastics that end up in a landfill. So far, we have diverted over 300 pounds. And finally, the Colonia High School Esports Team completed its second season of competitive video gaming with Garden State Esports. The fully virtual team participating at the JV and Varsity Levels for both Rocket Team, Rocket League, and Valorant. The Varsity Valorant Squad qualified for the playoffs. Thank you all for this opportunity for me to be a part of this evening's Board of Education meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, for your detailed report. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. However, if you have other things to do, such as homework, and you have to leave, we perfectly understand.
I do have to leave, but thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Thank you. To recognize, joining us this evening is Anne's mother and principal at Colonia High School, Mr. Cheera. Thank you for being here, both. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of April 2024.
Mr. President, I submit the following reports: student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. For the public portion of the meeting, the Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. To anyone who wishes to speak on the agenda this evening.
Good evening. Amarilis Peralta Rayu.
Before you do, hold it before the time.
Pardon me?
Excuse me, one second. This thing's not on. Can you hear me?
I think Bruno's turning it on now.
Okay, Bruno, I'm sorry. Is this about an agenda item? An item on the agenda, because it'll be another opportunity to speak after this portion.
I would like to speak.
About, about an agenda?
About a response that Daniel Harris sent me.
Excuse me?
No. I want to speak.
Hold on.
Pardon me?
Is microphone working right now? So, so maybe this works. Okay, this is better. So, we have two public comment sessions during a Board of Education meeting. We have an agenda session where you speak about matters related to the agenda, and that's what this is for.
Right. And none of, none of the issues that I would like discussed are on the agenda. So I, I am speaking. I am choosing to speak at this time.
So we'll have you, we'll have you come up during the portion of the meeting where we speak about any matter, and you can come up and talk about that for your given.
Anything that's not important. Thank you. I will.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none others wishing to speak, we'll turn to the superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino.
Mr. President, I have 19 items to present to the board tonight.
Okay, do I have a second?
So motion.
Oh, excuse me. Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
Motion for the superintendent's.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Communication, Policy, and Planning Agenda. Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, the Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following eight agenda items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President?
Sure.
If I may?
Yes, Ms. Bourdain.
Number six on the agenda is, it references the Excellence in Education Award, the WTEF Dinner that we held last night in honor of our teachers and non-certified staff. We do select a, we don't, that schools select each, a teacher and a non-certified person from each school to be recognized each year, and our dinner was last night. We had 51 recipients, and 500 people came out to celebrate them. It was a really great night. We do this each year. It's a lot, leading up to it. I appreciate the team that's listed on the resolution that's, that helps each year put the dinner together, but I, but I mostly appreciate the reasons that we're there. Without the teachers and the certified, the non-certified staff, these, the schools would be nothing. And we appreciate everything that you guys do, and we appreciate the people that came out to celebrate them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. Like many in the administration and on the board, I attended the dinner. It was fantastic. Congratulations to those honorees. And for the public who don't catch that telecast, at the end of this telecast this evening, as part of the scroll, Woodbridge Channels has provided the names of the teachers and the educational support professionals as per the resolution in our packet this evening. So, members of the public can see those terrific teachers and support persons who received their awards last night. No other comments? Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
I'm going to abstain on item number six, and the name is Susan Bourdain. Yes to all others.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Curriculum Extracurricular Activities and Technology. Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Extracurricular Activities and Technology Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following 17 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Just make one comment this evening on items number one and two on this agenda. The district is purchasing vape detectors for our high schools and our middle schools. Vaping's become an unfortunate, prevalent, and terrible habit of students around the country, and we are being proactive about trying to deter its use in schools, particularly in high school bathrooms. So, we will address that and try to, try to help our kids not start the bad habit of vaping. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda. Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following 34 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Safety and Security Agenda. Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Safety and Security Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, present the following two items. I recommend for the adoption of foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. I have a second, a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by, by Ms. Bourdain. Are any comments or questions from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Buildings and Grounds Agenda. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Perez. I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? I'm going to make two comments here quick on item number one. The Colonia High School track will be resurfaced beginning this spring and through the summer. I know some residents had brought that to our attention as in being in need of resurfacing, so that's being accomplished this summer. And then finally, for the parents of school four and five in Avonel, the award for the construction is being awarded this evening to a construction contractor. Usually that takes about six weeks to two months in terms of staging construction, ordering building supplies, and then they should be starting construction in earnest. So this will complete the final project of the 2020 referendum, so we're very excited about that project and looking forward to its completion. Any other comments from the board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Dining and Transportation Agenda. Ms. Perez, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Dining and Transportation Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. I have a, a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Personnel Agenda. Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, presents the following 28 items. I'll be abstaining on items number 24 and 25, yes to all other items.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Did you not move them? Oh, sorry. Just so we know, we're moving the 28 items. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro, I know you mentioned it, but just one more time for the record? With the two, the extensions on 24 and 25.
28 items.
Yep.
I'm abstaining on 24 and 25.
Perfect. Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
I will be abstaining on item 24 and item 25, yes on all other items.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
I'll be abstaining on items number 24 and number 25, voting yes on the remaining agenda. Thank you. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations for us this evening?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the board? Is there any new business that should be brought before the attention of the board?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would just like to take the opportunity to mention that the POAC Walk that was referenced earlier by our student is on Saturday, May 18th, at Woodbridge High School from 2:00 to 11:00. 2:00 to 11:00, I've had a long night last night. 11:00 to 2:00, I wish it was 2:00 to 11:00, that'd be fun. From 11:00 to 2:00 at Woodbridge High School. POAC is Parents of Autistic Children. We are, they are considered like a POAC, let me reset for a second, a partner district with us where they do trainings for our, our first responders. They do days out for fun for our kids that are involved in our special needs community, and they do allow every student that's in our special needs community to attend. They don't just have to have autism. So, we encourage everybody to come out and support them as they support us and our community. And that is the 18th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, not, not the other way around. And I mentioned the WTEF Dinner last night, which I wanted to just mention again. A lot of really great teachers and staff were celebrated last night, and the other thing about that dinner was we had a lot of businesses in the community donate goods and services to our Tricky Tray last night, which the money that we raised from the Tricky tray and the little bit extra from the dinner goes straight back into our schools. We've in the past given money to the high schools, the middle school, elementary schools. This year, we'll be circling back to the middle schools, and they'll be receiving whatever money divided by five that we have left over from last night, and also to three scholarships, one to each high school in the name of Emily Green. She was an educator in the district, and she was the former chair of the committee many years ago, and it's an honor for me to be sitting chair of the committee after all the great things that I've heard about her. It's no easy shoes to fill, as my predecessors will tell you, but I want to just give a shout-out to all the businesses that donated, not only to that dinner last night, but to all of the community events that we have. And each month, the businesses do giving nights where they do anywhere from like fifteen to Babakous does twenty-five percent back, so we appreciate everyone that visits those nights and supports our schools that way. So, thank you to the businesses in our community. I think Dan's putting together a comprehensive list so we can properly thank you, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. Any other members?
Mr. President.
Sure. Hi, Ms. Anderson.
Just want to give some options to our parents for summer camp. The first summer camp that I want to bring your attention to is at the Woodbridge Community Center Summer Camp. That's first grade, for children in grades pre-K through sixth grade. If you have, if you want additional information, the camp registration is now open. Please call seven-three-two-five-nine-six-four-one-seven-oh to speak to a Woodbridge Community Center Guest Service Associate if you have any questions. Middlesex College is also having Camp Middlesex. That is for ages five through thirteen. Their camp is running from June twenty-fourth through August sixteenth, and if you want additional information, please call seven-three-two-nine-zero-six-two-five-five-six for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Perez?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to highlight an event as well in Woodbridge Township. It's our Support Our Troops Rally that's going to be taking place on Wednesday, May twenty-second at six p.m. It's going to be at the monument between the Woodbridge Library and the Woodbridge High School. And just to give a little tidbit, like, your support helps our local military families know that their sacrifices in defense of our freedom have not been forgotten, and if you know of anyone in the township who served in the military, please contact our Fifth Ward Councilwoman, Debbie Meham, and you can contact her at the colonialcorner@comcast.net. Again, that's going to be on Wednesday, May twenty-second at six p.m. at the monument between the Woodbridge Main Library and Woodbridge High School.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes. On June twenty-fourth, on June twenty-fourth to June twenty-eighth, the Woodbridge Fire Department across the street is having their Sixth Annual Junior Fire Academy. Runs from nine o'clock to two o'clock. The kids go over the equipment, they go over accountability, officer roles, physical fitness. They come down to the fire academy in Saraville, and they do a tour. They learn about teamwork, ladder placement, they get certified in CPR with the American Heart, and they do a lot of other stuff, so if the kids are looking for anything to do, they can call seven-three-two-six-zero-two-six-zero-five-zero, extension six-one-seven-four. Space is limited, so if anyone is interested, contact them and get them signed up, but it's a good program for the kids. It's a lot of fun.
Absolutely.
Any other members wishing to speak? Turn it over to the public portion. We'll now open the meeting for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation eleven-hundred-D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Good evening. I'm Marilis Peraltajou. I live in Hoplum. I have two children that attend Port Reading School Number Nine, and my statement is in reference to the response that you, Daniel Harris, provided. I would like for you to rectify your email, the wording on your email. My children did not choose to use and experiment with drugs. Two, I have a question. I know that from working in school districts and from other experiences, I have an older child as well that actually went to the school district in Woodbridge a few years ago. What is Joseph Massimino's role? Because if we're getting communication, important communication about how we're going to prevent drug distribution in our districts, given by nurses, it's my understanding that it is the role of the superintendent and the assistant superintendents to provide this important communication. These are sensitive issues, and my concern as a mother are legitimate and are not to be undermined. I think that any one of you who is a parent would understand that I am upset. I am upset because this issue has been ignored, and now you added insult to injury by saying that my children chose to use and experiment with drugs. There has been no wording about another child provided the drugs. There has been no communication to indicate how these parents were addressed. Yes, the prosecutor's office was contacted, and yes, maybe there was not a lot of evidence. And I'm not looking to charge or to be punitive about this. I am looking to prevent future events from happening to my children as well as other children in this community. That is my main concern, and I just feel like this has been a slap in the face because no one addressed me. It wasn't until I reached out to Channel Twelve News that morning that Mr. Joseph Massimino reached out to me to call, claiming that he didn't know anything about it. You knew about this at ten-thirty at night when it happened, and I know exactly. If you want me to go into detail about how I know you know, I can, but you do know. Yeah, that's why you have that smirk on your face. Let me tell you something, Joseph. If this was a child of yours, let alone, you disclosed that you have two children. Thank you for sharing that, because that is valuable private information, and we should all protect our children. But why is it that it's so insignificant when it's somebody else's children? I ask each and every one of you. I directed myself to you. I came to three meetings. I heard nothing about this, okay? No one has mentioned it. My daughter's classmate last night said to me, "I only found out because my daughter told me that a kid in school had a seizure and had to be taken to the hospital," which is inaccurate information. Why don't we educate our children, our students accurately? I know that when tragedies take place, when other events take place in other areas, there are teams put together to inform, to make sure the children have accurate information to protect them, to inform families, parents of how things happen, that they don't have to hear through a third party. Why is it that the Woodbridge School District is being so secretive about it? It's going to be known no matter what. I don't want you to perceive me as an angry parent that is disgruntled. I want you to see me as a parent that is concerned, that has lived in this community, that has owned a home in this community for years and loves to live here, and I value my children's education and I value their safety. When they leave the house in the morning, I want to know that they're safe, okay? They're walking, you have a responsibility on your shoulders. You, as a superintendent, your assistant superintendent, and you as board members, elected board members, know that the responsibility, the safety and care of our children is in your hands when they're in school. So, why is it that this is not being discussed appropriately? And why is it that you, Daniel Harris, chose those words? I need you to rectify that, please. Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure, I'll turn to you. Thank you very much. I, you had emailed me, I had responded. I'll take a look at my response. There was no way, I think when I was referring to experimentation, it was in the broader sense that that's what children, teenagers, adults do.
Okay, just ma'am, just let him finish, please.
I didn't want to address your child. I was concerned, I expressed that concern. I'm glad they're feeling better, and I wasn't trying to be accusatory. I was trying to be constructive. I've told you all the things we do and how we have responded. For example, the May, excuse me, April twenty-sixth letter that we issued to the district, Dr. Massimino, and I had discussed my response to your, to you, and if I offended you in any way, that was certainly not my intention. I appreciate your passion and your concern for your children as well as all the other children, and we will continue to do whatever it takes as a district, and I know we have, in addressing any kind of drug usage, we certainly don't want it to happen. As I had pointed out to you in the email and mentioned during tonight's meeting, we're installing vape detectors to try to deter, you know, another form of legal drugs. So, you know, we're doing what we can, and I will be happy to continue to discuss ways in which we could further address that. Dr. Massimino, did you have something to add?
Sure, so, Ms. Rajou, I just want to address a couple of the statements you made. Number one, when you said you talked to the prosecutor's office and they didn't give you a whole lot of evidence, I agree with you, they didn't give us a whole lot of evidence either, and unfortunately, for us to take action in certain arenas, we do need evidence. We do need evidence to proceed. We also do not comment on active police investigations, which is why I called the board attorney and had a discussion with him about how we would interact with the prosecutor's office. I wouldn't put any student information, whether it was someone that had been accused of something or someone had fallen victim to something, in a newsletter district-wide. That is not something that I would do. You never contacted me directly. You did not send me an email. You did not call me. You sent the principal an email on April fifteenth requesting a meeting with me, but you never contacted me directly. The email was forwarded to me that Friday. When I got the request from News Twelve for a comment, I had followed up with the principal from School Nine. I never said to you that I didn't know about it. What I said to you was, "I did not know that you wanted to meet with me." We have almost fourteen thousand students. I'm not aware of who wants to meet with me, which is why my email and my office line are on the publicly accessible website. When the email was forwarded to me by the principal, and I saw your request, and you hadn't reached out, I asked the principal, "Did you give her my contact information, even though it is publicly available?" And she said, "Yes, she did." Okay, despite you not reaching out, I did reach out to you, and within hours, we had a meeting in my office, we called your husband on his cellphone so he could join in as well, and I did sit and listen to you. I explained to you then, I cannot send anything out while there's an active police investigation, nor would I be inclined to unless I had evidence or things to go off of. I did tell you that we were redoing how we administer medication, and that it would be an opportunity for us to talk about some other items. Specifically in the letter, and I'll read this section. Another pressing issue affecting our community is the ingestion of edible cannabis, marijuana, by children. The following should be considered both a warning and guidance to parents guardians of the dangers of drug-laced products that are being accessed by children. Edible cannabis has some different risks than smoked cannabis, including a greater risk of poisoning. With the legalization of cannabis in New Jersey for medical and recreational use, the accessibility of these products has increased. Edible cannabis products often look just like regular candy, baked goods, and drinks like soda and tea. They may contain high levels of THC, the psychoactive ingredient cannabis, and can lead to dangerous symptoms in children. THC poisoning can happen if children get a hold of these products, as they may be highly concentrated or contain more than one dose. Children who eat cannabis edibles can become very sick and may struggle to walk, sit up, and breathe normally. The New Jersey Poison and Information and Education System recommends the following to mitigate the risk of accidental exposure to cannabis products. Store edible products in secure locked place out of sight and reach of children and pets. Limit the amount and number of edible products you have in the house at one time. Be aware of the potency of the edibles you have at home, and only purchase products containing cannabis from licensed dispensaries. Should you have any further inquiries, please reach out to your healthcare provider, the Woodbridge Health Department at seven-three-two-eight-five-five-oh-six-zero-zero, or the New Jersey Poison Control Center at one-eight-hundred-two-two-two-one-two-two-two. If you think someone has consumed too much cannabis, contact the New Jersey Poison Control Center immediately for medical treatment or advice, or call nine-one-one for an emergency. Thank you for your attention to these matters and your commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of our students. Should you wish to discuss this further, please feel free to reach out to your school's respective nurse. That was the letter that I said we would send out when we revised the policy. I do believe it addresses rather comprehensively the fact that cannabis is readily accessible, unfortunately, to people that are not of age to get it. We talked about what it looks like, how it can be mistaken, how to store it, and then what to happen if there is a consumption and there is an adverse reaction. We don't share specific information about students in district-wide correspondence, and I shared that with you. I also shared with you that we couldn't take any action against anyone without guidance from the prosecutor's office because their investigation had not been complete, and they had not given us any update. So, there is no action to take against the student that you are alleging gave your child. I'm not saying what did or didn't happen. I am not the investigator from the prosecutor's office. I'm not a law enforcement official. I do think it is disingenuous for you to say that I didn't reach out to you. I don't reach out to parents. There's fourteen thousand students. I reach out to parents when there's an issue. I followed up with the building principal to say, "How are the students doing? Are they back in school? Do they need to meet with the counselor?" Because the principals of all our schools have those conversations with their respective stakeholders. If the parents would like to speak with me subsequent to that conversation, again, my information is publicly available, and any parent that has reached out to me gets an email, a phone call, or a meeting back, which when I did call you, I set up that day. So, I want to clarify some of those things. I do appreciate you saying that the prosecutor's office said there was minimal evidence, because we received the same, and I do need that evidence to take any formal action against any student. Regardless of such, I would never publicize any student scenario or student name, because I wouldn't violate that confidentiality. I would lose my job if I did. So, I sent out the letter that I told you I would send out and included as much information that was pertinent to the concern that we both share, as does everybody up here regarding the availability and accessibility of cannabis, and unfortunately, the times where students are going to consume cannabis, as they unfortunately do other controlled substances. You want an assurance that it won't happen again. I cannot search, nor would I legally be able to, every student's belongings every day. I don't know of a school district that does do that. We try to educate our students, we try to educate our parents, we try to share the relevant information. The News Twelve ran and said many of the same things that we included in our letter. I understand you're upset, and I told you in my office, I do have two children, and I would feel the same way regarding my concern if they ingested something and they got sick. But I also told you, I have to wait for the prosecutor's office to give me direct information before I can take any formal action against anyone. I'm not sure what you're asking me to do beyond all of the steps we have taken, and we will continue to take. I told you about the counselors we have added to every middle school, we talked about the DARE program. In my budget presentation, I talked about how this year, I brought in, and the board had the vision to discuss it with me, collaborate and support it, a supervisor of counseling services, so that things like bullying and things like illicit drug consumption could be addressed. So, we do take it very seriously, and we do take all the proactive measures we can. The reality is, we can't search every kid every day and all of their items. We cannot. For any of that, I don't know if there's a, if you have a different suggestion that I can legally employ, like I said to you in my office, I'm all ears. I told you I would include it in the letter, and I did. I'm not sure what other communication you're looking for, and I say that honestly. I too have lived in this town my whole life, and I too take great pride in keeping students safe, so any presumption otherwise is insulting. What do I do? I do a lot, and I have a lot of conversations. There are legal constraints regarding searching students. I cannot go through every student's lunch bag. That is not something I can do. If I did, I would have a roomful of people with attorneys suing me, and I would probably be out of a job very shortly. We are taking all of the legal measures we can to be proactive, and unfortunately, sometimes we are also reactive. We're doing the best we can to educate our students and our parents, because I do believe it takes a village, and it is an exceptionally unfortunate incident, and I shared that with you, and I said to you, "My heart goes to you, and I'm sorry that you had to experience." I did say those things to you. So, to paint me as someone who didn't respond to you when you didn't reach out to me is not accurate. You never reached out to me. When I became aware of your desire to meet with me, my first question was, "Why didn't she email me?" Because she knew how to email News Twelve and email everyone else, and my email's right on the website. It's on every letter I send. So, I don't know why you didn't reach out to me directly. I would have been happy to have the conversation whenever you would have liked, but I don't know that you want to talk to me unless you tell me that. When I did find out, I called you and said, "Where are you available today? By all means, please come in." "Can I call my husband? By all means, ma'am, please put him on the phone. I want him to be part of this conversation." And I apologize for any shortcoming from the principal to the nurse or anything else because you were upset, and you deserved an apology for simply the issue happening. The reality is, we don't have any factual evidence provided by the prosecutor's office that it was given in school. That does not exist. So, I can work on all of the things that I can work on, but I do need the evidence to take certain formal action, and I do have to continue to operate within the eyes of the law and our policies and regulations. Moving forward, if there is a concern, I would ask, as I tell all parents, reach out to the principal or reach out to me.